Ladies and gentlemen, recall the A-7 to be the primary conference of the morning, communication, which is to be led by member Ryan Simeon.
Would you please bow your heads and pray with me? Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who has gathered here today. Thank you for your many abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health, for the ability to think and make decisions on our own, and for friendship. Give us the wisdom, wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues we are facing. Give us a sense of welfare and true needs of our people. Give us confidence in what is good and fitting. Give us the ability to work together in harmony even where there is honest disagreement. Give us personal peace in our lives and join us in our task. Let us pray for the agenda set before us today, and please give us assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work and around our beloved City of Alliance. It is in your most blessed name that we pray, amen.
Amen. The blood of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. Edwards, here. Jacob Eads. King. Rome. Simeon. Here.
Did everybody get a copy of the April 16th regular council meeting minutes? Would you have any concerns, suggestions, corrections? Hearing none, we will file those minutes. Communications.
I have the items listed in the order of business with the addition of the memorandum from the mayor's office indicating receipts collected in April of 2018. Those receipts include $805,527.18 in the Land and Silver Department, $5,905 in the Cemetery Department, $12,134.99 in the Building Department, $3,697.41 in the Engineering Department, and $42,650 in the mayor's office for a grand total collected of $869,914.59. And I also have the addition of the Alliance Health Department 2017, the annual report. With those two additions, that's all I have.
Mr. President.
Ms. Jacob Eads.
I move to receive, approve, and file all of the communications listed in the order of business for tonight with the addition of the memorandum of receipts from the mayor's office.
The movement is seconded to approve, receive, and file all the communications listed including the additions. Any further comment? Hearing none, all those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Administrative reports, Mary Darian.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Two items tonight for council. First, I want to congratulate and thank President Harry Pades of the Park Board. He's done a wonderful job completing the Park Lucky campaign. We wish him well tomorrow. We want to thank all the members of that committee that have worked diligently over the past few months to try and bring that to fruition, and of course, we encourage everyone to go out and vote tomorrow. Second item, I am requesting that under whole business, that there be a vote on the financial recovery plan. That include final reports, Mr. President.
Safety Service Director.
Mr. President, just a couple items. One, if you remember, you passed an ordinance about two months ago for service line insurance when we were partnering with the company to put up insurance for water sewer lines that met what our customers have for obligations. One of those letters going out to the residents of where that plan is now available, the first letter goes out the 14th, that we want to call it on the 28th this month. Speaking of letters, there was a lot of people up there to deal with the electric aggregation that changes. We had a cover areas that Mr. Edwards made care of, that's more than a fourth where he's nodding like he already knows. Washington Hills was originally the town. So residents there, some of them were automatically into an aggregation program, which was in Washington years ago. And so when they came out, they got hit with an early exit fee. And of course, they called. The good news is that Milpecs, all they need to do is let Milpec know they refund that exit fee. So if anything, you get a call like that, they can either call our office and we'll give them in touch, or they can go to Milpec and that will get taken care of. Most of you, but not all of you, got a notice from Health Commissioner that the rabies mating will go on again this year. That goes on through the 19th and 24th. It is similar to what has happened twice in the last two years. Finally, April was the first month for ODI and the events for motor vehicle accidents. We have 20 motor vehicle accidents. That means that we will bill $800. With their cost structure, it also means that they have sent out bills totaling $7,540. That's the numbers from the first month of that.
Mr. Rizzo.
Just a point of clarification regarding Milpec. If they recall the 855 number, which has been very good, basically part of the use, that's not going to get them anywhere. They need to either send me a photocopy of the letter they received or stop by City Hall so that I can have a copy of the letter and send it directly to the director of Milpec. And he said, I met with him on Friday, and he said, whoever has a problem there, we'll send them a check of $25. But the 800 number's not going to do it. It needs to come directly to me and evidence of it, just the letter they received. So thank you.
Mr. Simeon.
I'm Mr. George D. I buy that for the insurance, is that going to be the water bill?
No, it's a separate mailing. It's a mailing that's done by the company. It will carry, I don't think that's too low, like a, say, city, but might indicate that we are supportive of the program. We have some training going on also, but if residents call and are concerned about it all, they'll let them know. They don't have to go into this program and they don't have to utilize this company if they need to.
I think there's somebody might have gotten wind of that because I got a letter from another company wanting to know if I wanted to buy their insurance for the water lines. So I mean, yeah.
Any other questions, Safety Service Director? Thank you. Lotterie Knowles.
Mr. President?
Well, I went out of order, didn't I?
Sorry.
Go ahead of the class.
Two items tonight, first is ordinance 3418, which is a bunch of adjustments, those kind of, these are just my, first one's for CDG housing rehab loan funds, the money that the Department has to be appropriated to process for rehab loans, that they're doing annually. Last two are insurance proceeds, which we received this year. And the first one's for the Park Department for the rest of shelter. In January, we received around $20,000, I didn't know that was going to be it, but this is an additional amount of insurance that we're receiving. So we need to process that so that they can continue with repairs, getting the inventory out there. The last one is for the Police Department, this for vehicles. This is from the cruiser that was hit by us and then by the ones that were hit by the park cruisers. That's the total amount that we've received so far for this, as to process some repairs for that. I don't know if there's still more coming in on that. I'm sure there could be more money coming in for insurance proceeds from that back. Just so we can catch it in the later time. My last thing is just the tax cap, which kind of consistent with this year, still behind with last year's pace, but the last several months we had, we actually made up some ground from game, so that it's, maybe it's, as I said, some of that. As far as April numbers, we'll have them tomorrow. Some of it, everybody, and obviously this time this month, maybe before the council meeting, I get together, just every cap number to see how trending in terms of our expenses going for this year. That's all I have.
Any questions, Olivia? Madam Law Director.
Thank you, sir. My report tonight is similar to last, not last week, three weeks ago, I guess. We've got a next full weekend. I'm requesting that you call an executive session to discuss pending or imminent. I have the court section here. I'm not necessarily requesting that you do it during my report as you did last time, but I do want to give you this caveat. My sons are at this very minute going through their Eagle Scout order from you, and so I'd like to be there when they're awarded their scouts at like 8:10. So if you can make sure I get out of here so I can see that it's been a long six years coming, and they're both getting it tonight, not one foot. So not necessarily this minute, because I know it's a real inconvenience to the people to have to leave and provide, since we only have one order, so they may do it at the end. But I just wanted to give you that caveat, and I wanted to give you enough time to ask me the questions you wish to ask.
If we should make a motion right now and go into executive session at the end, as requested by the lotterie?
Well, no, 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 well, somebody has to make a motion. Somebody has to make a motion.
I'm not making a motion, I'm just.
I can't make a motion.
Right, I'm opening up the door to somebody to make the proper motion.
I will make a motion if we do enter executive session at the end. The Congress is with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body, their subject of pending or imminent court action, including council members, the mayor, city service director, law director, clerk, and the other.
Is there a second for that motion?
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and we go into executive session, and the motion was literally read from the statute, so we believe it to be a correct motion. Will you please hold it all?
Chair.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Edwards.
Yes.
Jacob Eads.
No.
King.
No.
Rome.
Yes.
Simeon.
Yes.
Five to two.
Thank you, sir.
And that motion was to go into executive session at the conclusion of the regular meeting, but no business to follow, correct?
Yes.
What's the meaning of reading it?
Okay. Properties and land, Ms. Chair.
I have nothing to say, but I did want to tell everybody that in all I maintain, I'm so glad to see Sanders doors open. I know that a lot of the residents, especially in the first and second ward, are so pleased that we do have a grocery store down in, as they say, and the people were well received. I went through and I saw actual smiles on people's faces, just grateful that the store is there. And I talked with Mark Sanders, and I told him whatever I could do for the residents of Alliance, not just the first and second ward, but to maintain that store, because that's our store, I can take pride in it, and do what we gotta do to make sure that they are welcome here, and I want them to step in. And second of all, I went to Alhambin last week, there was a fair housing seminar. The district personnel came up and she gave us enlightenment about the new laws of fair housing and the different things that we need to do as far as house complaints in the City of Alliance. And personally, I have two constituents that called me with problems with some of our landlords here in Alliance, meaning that their accepting rent, and the rent is high, and the houses are actually dilapidated, substandard. And I asked one of the landlords if they would love to live in that same house, would they feel comfortable living there. One young lady had mice in the house, she gave us some crap, she was there the next week. Well, if you don't like this, you can move. Evidently, I think this landlord does not know the fair housing laws, so it's gonna be my business this week, the letters went out, to address some of the landlords here in Alliance, because back in the 70s and 80s, I was the fair housing coordinator here in the City of Alliance under contract with the county. And somehow, over the years, there's a lot of landlords, and I'm not pinpointing all landlords or all realtors, but there's several in the City of Alliance that need to come up and understand the fair housing laws, and I'm gonna see to it that they do the next month, just so that people need to be treated fairly, to live where they want to, in peace and in decency. So that's all I have for you, sir.
Thank you. Safety Janice here. It gave my attention, by the way, that we are soon going to be celebrating the 120-foot anniversary of the Ohio Fire Department. Not yet, we'll, we'll talk about that later, but wouldn't it be amazing to know how much property they saved, how many lives they saved, how much good they've done to the community over that time? And also, before we meet again, a national police memorial meeting will take place. Back in 1962, President Kennedy determined that May 15th would be honored annually as a day to remember in your law enforcement. And wouldn't it be great if you could know, you know, what they've saved over the years, the people they've saved, and the bad guys they've put away, and I guess my message tonight is be thankful for what you have. A lot of other communities would give their, well, they would give a tremendous amount to be able to boast of the type of safety forces and the quality of service that we get from those individuals. So I want to tell you both, thank you. And if, Chief Griffith, is there an Alliance ceremony going to be taking place?
Yes, sir, Monday, on the square.
Are we from today?
Yes.
On the square?
Yes.
At noon?
Yes.
Very good. So I could tell you, those are always amazing ceremonies, very somber, and certainly worth your time if you have it, to go spend an hour, maybe a little bit longer, on the square next Monday at noon. And with that, I'm done. Thank you very much. Utilities.
No formal report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Finances.
No formal report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Community development.
No formal report.
Thank you. Streets and alleys. Thank you. Planning, zoning, and housing.
No report.
Thank you. Madam Law Director, something's clear to wish. Public speaks.
We have one. Walter Wills.
Sir, please wait and, if you'd like to come on, I don't need you to come up. Just gonna need you to give us your name and your address, and then you have three minutes to advise us whatever you came to tell us.
Yes, Pastor Walker, this is on 601 Harvard, North West Canton, Ohio, former resident of Alliance, I am the community initiative reduce violence project director, prosecutor General Ferrero's office, been doing that one on five years since November. In December, I talked with the Canton Police Department and also have permission from Mr. Ferrero to research Crime Stoppers, Canton PD was a yes on that, and we've already started a project in Canton, where we're doing some things now to get information on the seven homicides that we had in 2017, and so we're pursuing those seven cases. But out of our research, we realized that Stark County is one of the largest counties in the state of Ohio that does not have Crime Stoppers, and so have been given permission to start a Crime Stoppers, and we've been meeting, and we'll have a formal meeting to start a board. It would be a nonprofit on the 24th of this month at 9:00 AM in the morning, at Stark Metro Bronx Housing Authority's headquarters, and we wanted to share this with Alliance. It was in the Canton repository yesterday, and we're looking, it's this Stark County project, it's not just City of Canton, and if there's any individuals who would be interested in becoming a part of the board, probably got to contact me, and our number's 330-309-2900, 330-309-2900. And so we want to get this for all of Stark County. Any minutes of street, my coworker is over at the Madison City Council speaking tonight, and we've already spoken with Canton City Council, and so we wanted to forward that to Alliance also, since again, this is a countywide project. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions for Pastor? Hearing none, we'll move on to council member roundtable discussion. As you all know, it's an opportunity for you to discuss pretty much whatever you have on your mind and your heart. You've got about 10 minutes of uninterrupted time if you want, although we'll pick the law director to hope that we don't exercise all of that collectively. So, Member Chair, you're up.
I defer my time to General Governor. Oh, you don't have to do that. I have, that's what I'm saying, like, all the children have said, those last eight two months have said. Other than each and every citizen in Alliance who is a registered voter, I urge you, I encourage you to get out of the vote, regardless of your choices, as long as you vote. That's always been my motto, and I encourage every voter, get out of the party and vote. Thank you.
My turn. I would like to add to what the mayor said earlier about, about Harry Pades and the Park Board, and all the volunteers, and everybody that's been there. Sign campaign is excellent. I thought the articles, the ads in the newspaper were excellent. It's a great message. I hope it's well received. I'm encouraging everybody to go vote for the Park Lucky. If you haven't gone already, of course, it's tomorrow. And the City of Alliance, not just the parks, but every area of the City of Alliance needs that to pass, so please, you vote and encourage somebody else to vote. Thank you. The shadows.
I also want to recommend Mr. Pades, since committing, and strongly recommend it, in favor of the Parks Library tomorrow. Just quickly on the, on the resolution that's hanging around forever, 29-18, kind of beaten to death or any good. I just want to, I just want to repeat that when I reviewed the fiscal report, recovery report, there are also some items, I shouldn't say, that are completely agreed upon yet in tier two, and if, I don't think we want to get into tier two, because there's some things in that that would not be pleasant for the council or the citizens of Alliance, but as far as the fact goes, we went back and forth on that, but I just want to reiterate that I've been told by this administration that whatever happens with the Fire Department, that that would be no loss of service. We would still have the same service that we have right now, whatever happens with that. If it's not, you don't vote for it. And so I just kind of talked about, as far as, if we had to get into the tier two also, what I'm looking at, there's some areas in that as far as, I'm not sure if the state would want us to go there, but some things that we might have to look at that would not be pleasant as far as fees, taxes, and costs that could be incurred by the citizens would not be pleasant at all. And we do have to remember that this is just part of, we need to pass that levy, and we also need to do something to help our finances out too. And this is just part of, because what the state, what they else wanted to carry over budget, that is as much as what we're in the hole. So I think we just need to take a look at that, that's all I have.
Number Jacob Eads.
Well, I'm not going to repeat all of my previous comments. I think my colleagues all know how I feel about this plan, but kind of in the spirit of the comments that three of you have made already about the Park Lucky, I guess not so much as shared, but it is the importance of voting. As I've gone to a couple of the Park Lucky meetings, that committee, I've seen an absolutely incredible group of people, most of whom are not political at all, who I've never seen work on a campaign before, all band together to do anything and everything that somebody brought up as a potential way to sway votes and encourage people to vote. I have heard a thousand different reasons why we need our parks and why the Park Lucky is a great idea, and why it's not just a win for the Parks Department and the role that parks play in the city, but the city as a whole, and how we might be able to spend the money and free it up, and it won't be spent on the parks until it passes. And, you know, it reminds me, or should remind me, I guess, of City Council and how we work together. But unfortunately, as evidenced by the fiscal recovery plan, we don't work together that well. The recovery plan, the mayor's plan, was supposed to be ratified by council, but we're also supposed to have a chamber that's in it. We're all supposed to be on the same footing about what our plan is to get out of this whole caution, what steps we'll take, and what is it going to look like. And I cannot honestly tell the voters, or anybody for that matter, that I know exactly what the plan is, because it's been crowded and busy, and we don't know what will happen in negotiations, and we can't reveal what's gonna happen in negotiations, and I just reiterate my previous comments, that I'm not gonna vote for something that I cannot vote in case the people are voting for me. However, I will certainly be voting for the Park Lucky tomorrow, and I hope that we can all take a lesson when it passes by huge margins, so we shall all be working together, let those people work together.
Thank you. Number King. Number Row.
I'd just also like Mr. Pades, and we would like to draw on that, to appreciate what you have said, so thank you. That's all I have to say.
Number Simeon.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Stephanie, the daily Alliance FOP, for putting on the second annual Main Street Live Saturday, also the sponsors. Not only was I able to be there, I also took part in it with my sock organization, but it was a great event, and it was nice to see, you know, downtown, something that's not on State Street or downtown again, so it kind of brings back memories from when I was a kid, you know, seeing all those people there, but so it was a great event. Thanks.
Thank you. I guess we have no third readings?
No third readings? No second readings?
No second reading. So we have new business.
Which takes us to ordinance 3418, introduced by Justice Moon and Jacob Eads. It's an ordinance making appropriations and transfers of funds in the 2018 appropriations to provide for necessary expenses and adjustments in requiring emergency.
Mr. President.
Ms. Jacob Eads.
Please suspend the rule requiring the appropriations ordinance 3418 be referred to the Finance Committee.
I will say that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rule requiring appropriations ordinance to be referred to the Finance Committee, and include the discussion. Hearing none, all those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion's carried.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rule requiring three readings on ordinance 34-18.
I will say that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rule requiring three readings on ordinance 3418. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance 34-18.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 3418.
That is, an ordinance making appropriations and transfers of funds in the 2018 appropriations to provide for necessary expenses and adjustments in requiring emergency.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion's carried.
And it's all the new business we have.
We have one item on old business? Mr. Row.
I move for adoption of 2918.
Why, Mark, I just want to, that is not the senior one, it's a whole business, just by now.
Mr. President, I move to bring out ordinance 2918, our old business, to what, new business? Mr. Frack, come here.
It's been moved by Member Row to bring Resolution 2918 from old business back to new business.
Second.
And it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let's do a walk.
Chair.
Yes.
Gordon.
None.
Edwards.
Yes.
Jacob Eads.
No.
King.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
Simeon.
No.
Four to three.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2918.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt, or Resolution 2918, which, as we all know, is the mayor's fiscal recovery plan in accordance with Section 118.025A of the Ohio Department of State. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I just want to say again that as far as the fire department, this is something for operations that will try to be implemented to help us with these laws.
And I would respond to that with, you know, what we get to vote on is not managerial rights. Managerial right has a lot of rights to do a lot of things, but what we get to vote on is a contract. And, you know, and I, I mean, if this, if this thing goes through to a contract without us knowing about it, I just, I don't want our safety forces to think that we just rubber staff, whatever, that's all, so.
I'm not saying that either. If it comes to a contract, if you like a contract, then go vote for it, right?
But that's, I understand what you're saying. Number Jack Meadys.
I would just like to point out explicitly that if this passes, and the administration takes this approach, we will have no control over what it costs to get to that point where we vote. How much money will we spend in what we all know is going to be contentious negotiations in order to get to a point where we make something now? So that's the other thing.
Well, I don't think we have to worry a whole lot about the morale going south, because the morale in these organizations isn't very high right now, so, but I do think we need to be aware of that, and like I said, they're about to celebrate a hundred and twenty-five years of service in Alliance. Hundred and twenty-five years of service. And we're going to vote on something that you don't even know, does that, how's that matter? Number Chair.
I, I agree with you, I agree with you, but something is none in the situation that we, our financial situation right now in the city, we're not out after any state service director, not out after any state departments. Overall, as you know, finance, you know, finance, we know, we must do, we all heard the same thing from the state, we have to do something, do it now. Hopefully, the park board levy goes through. We got to look at every entity that we have, and try to keep the city together, keep the fire department with all their employees still working, keep the police department with what they, everything they got now still working, keep the trash done every week. If we don't do something right now in this entity, we don't know what will be, like I said, you don't, you don't quite understand, you don't want to vote on something that you don't know, but the inevitable is in front of our faces, so we know that's coming if we don't do something. I'd rather try to do something, try to save our city, than sit back and say, and bicker every week about, I want to know everything. Transparency, if they go down, we all blame them. They are accountable in the administration, and we have to check them, and I do believe, even though y'all may not believe it, transparency is there and is coming here, because we as council, we have that right, but we got to do something.
Anybody else? Monsieur, it's color roll.
Chair.
Yes.
George.
No.
Edwards.
Yes.
Jack Meadys.
No.
King.
No.
Rome.
Yes.
Simeon.
No.
Do we need a motion to adjourn to the executive session?
No, we just can't move into the executive session.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be going into executive session as was voted on earlier. Thank you very much for coming in tonight. Don't forget to go vote, and we don't anticipate doing any business afterwards. Enjoy the rest of your evening, guys. Joe, I'm the director of planning and development.